Item number two, approval of minutes from previous meetings, the regular meeting on Tuesday, September 8th, and the special meeting Monday, September 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve both the 8th and the 14th.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, claims and payroll. Any other questions?
I just have one question. Pierce Broad Bay Network.
Which one was that?
Pierce Broad Bay Networks for $1,256.
Uh, that, we got a new computer for Jeremy.
Okay.
The one that Mike had was kind of dying sore, so.
Any other questions? Motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve claims and payroll.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. In courts manner. You want to say anything, Vicki, or would you like to say anything?
No.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask.
No, a lot is great though. City did an awesome job.
Good, good. Police Department interim chief, Nguyen. Good evening.
Good evening. I feel kind of special talking before Mr. Hart.
Right?
And the economic development, but anyway.
We can change up the.
The month of September didn't slow down any. We had a lot of civil matters going on. We had a lot of thefts. A lot of them were civil, but we had a lot of stolen property recovered right away. We did have a lot of criminal mischiefs going on. We did get half of those solved. And it's still kind of being worked on. A lot of domestic disturbances. We have made like three arrests on those and we made another two or three arrests on other incidents. And we had a lot of traffic. A lot of traffic citations were issued by the county. They came up and helped out a little bit. Really going after unlicensed vehicles or expired plates, basically. So if you have gotten any complaints of the deputies being in town pulling a lot of people over like the county has, we were kind of just hitting up on the expired plates. A lot of red tags that have two, three, four, and seven, and eight on them, so that's been getting handled. Other than that, pretty much the same stuff going on. Any questions?
Is there any way that you can get a, give us that report that, I know Bruce always gave us so we could kind of.
Yeah, he gave you the numbers in boxes.
Yeah.
I can do that. Well, I mean, I can try to do that if I can get them in the right little box.
It'd just be nice to look at part.
Sure, I can do that. Cause I have it all every month and then it'll add all up toward the end of the year. So I will work on that for you.
Not like you don't have anything else going on, but I'd appreciate that.
I'm getting a lot of help from Courtney and Melissa.
Really?
On a lot of my paperwork thing. I'm not, no. I did take typing high school, but it wasn't electric.
Was it one of those?
Yeah, I was.
I do have a report, or a question. I've had people talk to me about a camper that has been parkeded of residence that is now hooked up to propane.
A big propane tank.
Yes. What is the status of that? And when is it going to be removed? Because we can't be having everybody bringing campers and propaines.
Well, the status of that is, this is one big, big family and then some moved on and got married, had more kids, and then they kind of moved back, which I'm seeing a lot of people moving back home. But there was issues with some of the children not getting along and some of them starting to assault some others. But we had probation up, we had Health and Human Services up and everything else. They're kind of like, split them up that way for right now.
So are we thinking a month is all this is going to be? I just know.
Well, we have to have a reason first or law that says they can't do that. And the thing I'm looking at is probably be a health board issue more than a law.
Okay. So we need to get the health. We just can't have everybody bringing in a camper, putting it by the residence and having another family live into that and then put a propane tank right in front of that.
Yeah, the propane tank's kind of a dangerous thing for everybody in the neighborhood, so. We're going to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Economic Development, Susan?
All right. First thing you'll notice as we get going on our housing project is that we reduced our grant award from $452,000 to $427,000. That was on purpose. This was done to income qualify just two units of the four instead of three of the four. Once we got awarded the grant, the DED took three of the units. Investors didn't want that, so we kind of worked with them a little bit, tweaked some numbers, came up with $427,000. The investor will kick in some more money. NED's reduced their grant administration so we can kind of get that third unit, the bargain basement price of $15,000. So you'll notice that as we go forward with the project. Do you have any questions on that? Okay. CDBG disaster recovery black grant guidelines are supposed to be out by the end of October, so I'll be working with Mole and NED. There may be a minimum requirement, so you may have to spend a minimum amount of money to get your 12 and a half percent back from FEMA. We don't know what that is yet, but if, once we find out, we'll let you know. The deadline is still December 31st, so once we get those guidelines, we'll have to start working with the city. It'll have to be pretty quick. We'll need a lot of information in probably a week or two just to kind of get that going, so. Let's see. CDBG DTR grant, this was submitted September 15th for $435,000. This was the downtown revitalization. Hopefully we hear back in the next month if we get awarded. And then, once that happens, we'll pull the DTR committee. They'll have to go through quite a few meetings, a little bit of training, develop an application for the business owners, and we'll wait for the money to arrive from DED. We're thinking about January. And so at that point, we can start making that application public and activities can potentially begin early spring. There was a rural innovation challenge grant. USDA released a million dollars on August 10th. Said they were going to do five awards nationwide. All we had to do was come up with a rural innovation challenge place making grant. We, it was a long shot without we give it a shot. We did it, we got it. We were awarded $215,000 on September 10th. This grant for you guys, what it's going to do is, since we've already gone through the ECAP process with that strategic organic planning with the community, what this is going to do then is give you guys a comprehensive plan, usually $22,000, and a strategic plan, which is typically $7,500 for the price of a thousand bucks. The county absorbed the match for the grant, the 15% match. So they just want to recoup a little bit of their money, and so they're just asking for $1,000 to $1,500 from each community, basically getting $30,000 of documents, really great price. What's good about that is yours is from 2003. Updated comprehensive plans, looking at your zone and looking at all of your assets. I think I gave you the scope of work in the packet. If you want to add anything to that, you can. And then that tailor-made strategic plan that goes with it that incorporates the data from ECAP will help you move forward. It will help you identify what areas of growth are for the city, what you should do next. These are pretty important documents for you to have. We partnered with Madison County on this project, so all of the rural communities in Pierce and Madison County are getting this opportunity. You'll be get, working with Bobby Pettit from Five Rural Planning out of Carney. We purposely kept to the price of this, under $30,000, to avoid the procurement and the bid process. She knows what she's doing. She knows her stuff. We wrote this grant with her in mind. She is the one who came up with the scope of work. She is the one who the counties have already chosen to work with, so just for continuity, we were kind of hoping to keep it for everybody and work with Bobby. So what will happen is because you have gone through ECAP, as soon as the two counties are done, you and Osmond will be the next on the list, so we're hoping to start working with you guys in January. Bobby will reach out. You'll be in a focus group. It'll just be council for a little bit. As you kind of start going through the comp plan, there may be a community engagement at some point, or you may handpick some key stakeholders from the community to get you through the process. It should take about six to seven months, but it'll be really good, really comprehensive, and you're driving it, so you can add anything to that that you want. So. We have two years to get it done. We'll shoot for seven months.
Is that the 215 covered all the towns in both counties?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yep. And like for the communities in Madison that have not gone through ECAP, it pays for them to go through ECAP. Since all of the towns in Pierce have gone through the ECAP process, we get to be first on getting the documents because we finished part of the process. On LB-840, we're working on advertising the remaining lots in the LB-840 development, so you'll see some active ads out there. Hometown Holidays, we've got that scheduled. I've spoken with some business owners. We'll do some activities like we did last year. We're playing economic development. We'll be hosting the window decorating contest again. We'll be asking the business owners to participate in a gift basket giveaway. That went over really well last year. Courtney is going to be hosting the Adopt a Planner program, which came out really great last year. And Grant, Duma, and Rich Hodson are going to do the light parade. So the date for all of this is December 12th. There's upcoming conferences that I'll be presenting. I'm a presenter for the Northeast Nebraska Development Network Meeting on August 20th, or October 20th. With UNRURAL Futures, this is talking about our experience in the RFI program with our two interns this summer. They are looking for 100 host communities this coming year. And I'll also be presenting for the Connecting Rural Entrepreneurial Communities Conference. This is a collaboration of University of Nebraska, all of the Big Ten universities, and eight additional universities. It'll be a four-day online virtual conference, and I'll be on for two days. Basically, we'll be talking about the smart growth process, which is what we presented in that RPIC grant. How did Plainview take ECAP and turn that into housing, the completed park project, downtime revitalization, and that accelerated growth that happened in two and a half years, which is not normal. So we'll be kind of talking about how that process worked for us. And I think, that might be it.
Any questions?
Nothing?
Thank you, Susan. Superintendent Kurt?
Been busy. Got the pool winterized. Been putting, put four culvert, bleh, four culverts in Woodland Avenue. We've been doing some concrete work. Hopefully we'll get the one west of Casey's done yet this year. We did hire Chris Mann. He's been working there for a couple of weeks. Sound, looks like he's willing to work, so hopefully that's going to work out for us. Hank's house, we were helped on that. Hoffman did most of it. I see there's a four sale sign.
The town in that there's a four sales.
We got an MCL on Redwell, high nitrates. Just did a confirmation sample today. I won't know anything probably till next week. Don't look good, so I would assume we're going to be putting it on emergency only by the end of the year, so. We've got, I think JEO and, what is it?
ELD.
ELB or something like that. Plus them, and then that guy's out of Minnesota. Doing aquifer testing, so we won't have any of that data for probably a couple of months, so. What that does is they're trying to, you know, pinpoint a little better area where we can try to put a new well, so hopefully that gives us some good ideas, so. Other than that, that's it.
Any questions for Kurt? Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, thanks.
Number five, discussion action approval of city employee wages for 2020, 2021.
These are the same ones we presented in our budget, as approved to the budget. We've been over these, I don't know, two, three times now, so.
I had asked Jeremy to give me percentages of what those numbers would be. Courtney's 6%, Melissa 22%, Russ 21%, Kurt 20%, and Troy 16%. Last year they got a 3%, and you guys kind of all thought that was enough, so I don't know without that high. Yes, it was in the budget, but that's quite a jump from 3% last year.
I had proposed last year, similar to this year, just trying to get them up on even kill with comparable sized cities across the state. And that's why we're having a hard time hiring people and keeping people, because we're not paying them a fair wage. That's just my two cents.
Just from my realization, I mean, I got on there right when that meeting happened. You know, I think they proved themselves pretty dang good on the upcoming issues that we've had in this last year. And to get them up to the wages that are equal to other towns, you know. I, I don't think we're far off by doing that. You know, unfortunately, maybe should have happened a little bit faster over the years. Yeah. Are we going broke over this? No. Are we, you know, getting what they deserve? Yes. So I don't think we're too far off.
Do you have any discussion?
No, I just, I agree with what Tyler said. We've got some great employees.
Yeah.
And to hire new employees too, we have to pay them or we can't give them 10-year ago wages. We have to go with the current.
Maybe take the blinders off a little bit.
Right.
How much is Troy getting?
Proposed is.
16%.
15?
16.
Nah, he needs to be up there with me.
You want me to say?
What I want to be on, so.
Out loud, so.
What, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Would you like me to say out loud and so it's in here?
That's, that's.
So the proposed wages, I'll try to speak out loud, sorry. Clerk treasurer is $48,006. Deputy clerk treasurer, $17.74. Street superintendent, $23.55. City superintendent, $25. Solid waste manager, $19.10. And then the open position that was just recently filled, $17. Police chief slash interim police chief, $52,010. Police officer dependent on qualifications, $21.89. Library director, $35,010. Assistant librarian, $9.50. Children's librarian, $11. Economic development director, $17. And handy bus driver, $9.50. Seasonal and part-time dependent on qualification and years of service. Manor is per budget contract, or per manner budget and contracts, and city administrators per contract. And these are all comparable to cities of equal size across the state of Nebraska. Yes, Damon?
How many city workers like Kurt and Troy have we had in the past that we don't have now?
Well, we had a maximum, I believe it was six, and then we were down to three. Now we're at, what, three or four? No, technically four now.
Is it four now?
Four now with the recent hire, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Five and six without the transfer.
That's what.
Yeah.
I thought.
So basically we have three, and we used to have five and six.
So these guys are doing the work of basically four or five people.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any further discussion from the council?
How much money is Kurt making per hour?
Will he make?
Yeah.
$25 will be what?
And he has given 20 years to this town, and you just hired somebody at 17? It's lopsided, and then you had Troy in that mix too.
That's why we're going with.
These two guys, we would be hurting.
The experience these guys have got, you can't buy off the street.
Right. But that's why we're going with the 16% and a 20% increase.
We can reevaluate next year.
I mean, yeah, we all agree with you.
Yeah.
Damn good work, everybody does.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the 20, 2020, 2021 wages that have been presented.
Okay, second. Any further discussion from the council? Pam? Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, mayor appointment, zoning board replaced Dean Boyer through June 30th of 2021 with regrets. Mr. Boyer stepping down due to health issues, and Ryan Ober has graciously agreed to try it out until June 30th. And if he likes it, he said he'll do a full term, otherwise we'll be looking for somebody else with the council's blessing.
With the zoning board's recommendation, I make a motion to replace Dean Boyer with Ryan Ober.
Second? Kevin?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, discussion action on Keno grants. Okay. Currently in the Keno account, because we have been giving out and it's slowly starting to build back up, it is $33,514.52. The first one is for the Plainview High School Bowling Club. For $500 of busting. Is Joe Bather, anybody from the bowling club here? This is one that's, we've traditionally given out almost every year just to help them out a little bit, and they do other fundraising and parents tip in money.
Is bowling, is you doing bowling in part of the school now?
It is, and they're asking just to help out this year. Let's see if I can find that. Recently, bowling has become a high school sport that could use some help starting up. Prior to this year, high school bowling has always been funded with the help of the Keno grant, out of the pockets of parents, free coaching, and some fundraising. Any money granted to the boys and girls high school bowling teams will be used for the help of uniforms, bowling balls, shoes, food expenses during weekend meets, and any unforeseen startup cost that it might take to get our kids' bowling teams rolling this year.
Didn't we just get $3,000 to the Plainview boosters?
That was for the weightlifting, yes.
Are boosters the whole gamut? Or they just?
No, they are. That was for the, yeah. You're, Ellen?
I'm just saying, if you start president of this, or just, then you have another, what if, you know.
Basketball, soccer.
Yeah, now that it's, now that they're part of the.
Phone arrows, you know.
It doesn't fall to the same category that it has in the past.
Yeah, first people. I just thought that's what the sports boosters is about.
Right. And that was to help with new weightlifting equipment.
Or any other part of the sports booster group that's in Plainview?
Right. But the money was earmarked specifically for new weightlifting.
But they have a sports booster is what I'm saying.
Right.
And they have money, so they should promote their own sports. Just my opinion and the audience.
And I'll just remind that the whole, the Keno was started with the youth in mind. I mean, it has helped other organizations.
Well, and I think the Keno was also started to help with funds going on in the community to bring people into our community. And this, I know we might get people coming to the bowling needs, but where they're not on their own now, where they're part of the school, I mean, because just like it was stated, we're going to have the basketball team coming, we're going to have the volleyball team, wrestling, everything like that. I, I don't think I could support this this year. As much as I want to, I know they do a great job, you know, they went a long way with their bowling department, but just due to that fact.
Makes sense.
Motion one way or another?
I have a decline.
You can make a motion to decline.
I'm making a motion to decline.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to decline. Voting, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion to decline passes through the one. Second is for the Plainview FFA for $2,300 for a thermal imaging drone. Is Mr. Commander, anybody from the FFA here?
The chairman said he couldn't be here. He had to be involved with the game tonight.
Okay. It is a very big drone.
This is for a drone. He says, if I can read it, maybe.
Well, there's one that's typed. There's type one on the back.
Got you. Perfect. All right. The plan for this project is use grant funding to purchase DJI Mavic dual drone. This drone will be equipped with two different cameras, one for still and video shots and one for infrared imaging. Having a drone like this would enable my ag students to explore some introductory drone uses in agriculture, both in my plant science and agronomy classes for evaluating plant health and irrigation systems, as well as my animal science classes for checking temperature anomalies and livestock for health checks. A drone like this could also be used for producer, for searching for missing animals. In addition, this style of drone will allow me to explore other uses of drones outside of agricultural, but relevant to a small town life. Examples would include search and rescue operations in the fire control, and even in municipalities like finding water line breaks, which would be in the winter. We would like to get the drone purchased and operational this first semester that we can be using it during the spring season. Eventually, we'd like to make this tool available to the city for municipal use, as well as the police and fire departments for their uses needed. As you can see, we plan to use a grant from Land O' Lakes and Farmer's Pride. The FFA chapter will reinvest some of the profits from their first year's field plot back into the project as well. We're hoping that the council will see the benefit of this equipment and will partner with us in the project. That's what we have.
Any discussion?
You can say, like, what's the mapping company, or does it come with the subscription mapping? Or if you didn't only lag rate?
I don't know.
I mean, I've dealt with this stuff before.
I couldn't tell you. I know what he was talking about.
There's more to it than just putting a camera on there.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's just.
Hopefully we got the cost figured in for that.
This must be a pretty expensive thing if that many people are, they're doing that much money into it.
Yeah.
Different aspects.
$3,800.
Yeah.
$3,800.
$3,800, but they're asking $2,300 from the, you know, they have 1,500 matching funds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're putting in $1,000 and they got $250 each from Land O' Lakes and Farmer's Pride.
And the FFA chapter's putting $1,000, yeah.
Does he have the field plot money? I mean, that was hay.
No, I, field plot money was from farmers. I think they.
That plot over here, wasn't that hay for the school?
I, I think farmers gave matching crops.
Yeah, maybe. Some different areas.
We have, he means over here north of the ag shop, correct?
No, I, I think farmers gave him some crops, actual like a couple of years.
We had a fine acre.
I think we did a little bit.
There you go.
That's what I mean, you know. So do we have receipts on those to know how much he's? Because I know that he was the one doing the work and all that kind of stuff, so. Is he selling it?
I don't think he's got any. Trying to harvest it all the way here, I'm assuming.
Okay, so maybe.
You don't. I don't know. I think that's the, is that the FFA's contribution maybe? Not for sure.
Do any of you FFA kids have any more details on it?
The plotter here by the manor, we have not made, or shouldn't say we've not made. The bales will be sold this coming fall for any cow that we can find. There was talk of Evan Ashoff buying them for the Chris County feeders, I know that. And then we have not sold any of the grain off the feed pot, or the food plot yet, because contracted through shapers, we're going to choose when we want to sell it as a, as a wish.
So, do you know how much this thing costs altogether?
I do not know.
You should know that, ask that.
For what it's worth, I, I've studied this stuff some because of farmland issues. And this is the coming thing for a lot of farms.
Right.
Especially the infrared im- imaging, you know, they can fly a field, and if they learn how to read the images and get a good map made, you can tell what's hot, what's not, where it is probably growing better because it didn't need fertilizer, where maybe it did need fertilizer. These things can really tell a lot about agricultural use, and basic education in that at the high school level has to be a good thing.
Right.
I mean, because that is coming, there's no question about it.
And to a lot of our crews, you know, I've dealt with one for four years where I worked at previously. It is, I mean, you can get a report within a half an hour after mapping a field. The technology I was using wasn't the finest because it just wasn't perfected.
You can either get out there with your notebook and walk it for twenty-three hours, or you can fly it.
We're gonna come back. Sorry, so we'll come back to that.
Uh, number eleven, public hearings for nuisance properties, seven o'clock PM, first one is two zero seven South King Street, Robert and Bobby Jenkins. I would just say for, um, for the number eleven, the public hearings, instead of having a special meeting, we just incorporated it into the regular meeting tonight. So, the first one again is, oh, sorry.
Paul, no, go ahead.
Robert and Bobby Jenkins, two zero seven South King Street.
So, we just gotta save all your data?
Yep.
Like, set it up, it's not cleaned up.
Yep.
Cleaned up?
Correct.
Uh huh.
I'd say not go too far out either, because it's been like that for a long time.
By November first?
Soon as they'll work better, yeah, I'd say it's by November first.
You'll have a resolution passed as well, it's not on the agenda or anything.
Did you hear, we had to have a resolution passed, but it's not on the agenda, so we'll have to have another meeting or something to pass resolutions.
Alright, but you, you won't talk about how far, how many days and then you wanna proceed with it?
He said November first, okay, I missed it.
Yeah.
Did you second that then, Julie?
I did second it.
Okay, thank you. Um, voting Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second one is for two zero nine South King Street, Tim Jenkins.
I'll make a motion for the same thing, we have it done by November first.
Okay, second, further discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, Jeff Rotliff, one oh seven West Lucas, you have to use here.
You wanna step up to the podium?
Hi. Hello. Hi, Jeff. Anyway, I've been trying to get my yard cleaned up and stuff, especially after I got the letter. I've already gotten warned by one of my neighbors, so that's when I really started cleaning up everything. And a lot of that stuff that was there was actually good. I had a mower there that ran, and everybody made me get rid of it, of the city, after I got that letter. I had seven loads or more taken out, and I have all the papers, I never brought them, because I forgot to, but the city own, has them up there, and I've been taking trailer loads and trailer loads and trailer loads out to the dump. So, hopefully, this stuff will stop.
Was it to the regular dump or the transfer station?
Both.
Okay.
I took it to the west one, or south.
South one, so you had to go through, like, to get the tickets and shaper?
Yes.
I have them, so I have.
A lot of them, I just told them to mail.
Sure.
Because I, I just came back and was loading more. A lot of that stuff was actually good stuff, and a lot of it I had between my boat and my garage, and because I was gonna use it all, I was gonna try to put everything in the garage. Well, what got to me was, you know, Larry Babel did not get his stuff out of the garage, that's the reason why it was outside. And it took him a while, it took him two, three months. If I would've had more time, and you guys would've given me more time, I wouldn't have been outside. But now, because of that, I threw a lot of crap away that I just well could've kept. The mower, yeah, it needed a new blade, it needed new cables, but the motor ran. So, I mean, you know, I got rid of it just to try to make everybody happy. That's kinda hard for me to do, especially that before my father-in-law came up, which, come here. He came all the way from Platte Center because he was there to try to help me. He was getting ready to be kicked out of his home. Okay, so he came down here and I let him move in with me. He carried a lot of stuff out of my yard to take to the dump. If the cab is bothering somebody, I wish somebody would just come up to me and say, hey, can you please move this cab? Because as of right now, the cab is just gonna have to sit there. I don't have nobody to move my cab.
Is it yours, or how did it get there?
It's mine.
Okay.
It was moved in by trailer, but it was picked up by tractor. The person that picked it up with the tractor, I'm not talking to him barely.
Okay.
I stick to myself, I don't do nothing, y'all know that. I don't go out and cause trouble, trouble between anybody else. I don't go out my door to raise holy hell with anybody to cause trouble, problems with anybody. I, you know, I, I come out my door, I water my lawn, make my yard look nice, you know, I, I see my grass. I don't go out there and just be like, wow, hey, everybody, kiss my ass. I, I don't do that. You know, I, I go with, in my yard, I do what I need to do, and I go right back in my house. I bought that house, I've owned it for two and a half years. Since I bought that house, I've never had no problems with anybody until just recently. Does anybody around here have a problem with me? Because everybody here is making me think that they're shooting me out of this, out of this town, and I've been here for thirty-something years.
I know, Jeff.
Hey, Jeff, well, we're not, it's nothing against you, we're just trying to clean stuff up around town, you know, it's not you, so don't take it personally.
There's a lot of properties around town that people.
Okay, can I say something else without y'all taking it to offense?
Well, I didn't take offense to it at all.
Oh, we appreciate you doing this.
You know, since Roger and all them got all their stuff, yeah, I got some stuff from him because of something that I could use. It was tillers and stuff like that, my snow blowers and stuff were sitting outside by the garage. The only way that anybody could see that is if they either go through the alley and get out their vehicles and look over there. I have private property, no trespassing on my property for a reason. I have beware of dog sign on my property for a reason. That's for people to stay off my property, not to walk on my property. Because I don't like nobody, I don't, I really don't.
But do, do you understand what we're trying to do, though? I mean, we're just trying to clean the town up, it's nothing against, you know, we've went through tons of properties.
Yeah.
I mean, we really have, Jeff, and it's.
Well, I understand that, but when I bought that house for two and a half years and didn't have no one bother me, and then all of a sudden, bam! It just hits me all at once, especially when I'm by myself.
Yeah.
We've kinda revamped the health board, and they're becoming more and more involved in the community to clean it up. And it's nothing against you or anybody else, they're just driving by and, or looking or whatever, not going onto your property or anything, but just picking up properties that need to be cleaned up, that have some stuff that needs to be cleaned up, it's nothing personal.
No.
At all.
Well, that's the way I took it.
Every month we have a handful of, every month we have a handful.
That's, that's the way I took it.
No, please don't.
We, we just in, in the last.
I, I, I honestly, I feel like, you know, everybody's just shoving me out.
No.
Shoving me out, grabbing me and just pushing me.
That's not true, Jeff, that's not true.
There's a lot of this between the health board and then our auditor, um, you know, our evaluations are one of the lowest ones in the state for our size of town. And as a council, we're trying to improve our numbers.
Okay, and I, and I respect that of all you guys, I'm not trying to make you guys think that I'm Mister Big Man.
No, that's the drive.
But I, but I will tell you guys something, I'm tired of it. I stick to myself, yes, I go out there and I do fencing, okay, just to help them out. I come home, I don't do nothing, I go right to my house, and that's where I stay. You don't, do, okay, so my question is, do you guys barely even see me outside?
It was with you and.
But outside, right?
That's not the, that's not the issue, the issue is.
I know, I had junk in my yard.
We're trying to, we're trying to increase the, the, um, properties around here, for the, for the town in itself.
You need help, you need help getting your cab out of there, I mean.
Well, I don't want it going to the junkyard, for sure.
Right. We're trying to get.
That's for my tractor.
See, we're trying to get the tractor set up right now and everything, get new tires.
It's for snow.
Right.
Okay.
You need a semi tractor.
Right, I, I need the whole cab set on my tractor, see, I got another tractor.
Weekend, set on the tractor for you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got another tractor with a, with a loader on it.
Help him, you would help him, Mr.?
Yeah.
Damon will help you.
I appreciate it.
Actually, Thursday, if that works.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be fun, I appreciate it.
Damon, thank you very much.
Yeah, but I'm not trying to be Mister Big Man, but when I, I'm just telling you guys all that I'm tired of it.
No.
You know, I try to be, and that's the whole thing I'm trying to say, I keep, I try to keep my yard clean.
Yeah.
But I just moved from a, an apartment.
I know where you, you know.
To where I've been. Yeah, the whole inside, yeah, it ain't very pretty, I'll tell you guys that now, right now.
Do you really care about the outside?
I know, but I'm here to, I'm, I'm here.
Do you think, do you think by, if we give it till November first, uh, to get that, of course he's gonna do it on Thursday? Do you think that's a comparable date to, to get what else he's about to do?
Well, at least it'll be on there, at least it'll be on there, but see, that's what I'm saying, if you guys would just give me time.
Alright, well, we would do that, we're willing to work.
I, I would be, I would greatly appreciate it if you guys would just give me time.
If that's what you want.
Instead of aging me, to get my yard cleaned up.
You have made a good effort.
Hope he's working on it, maybe add another month.
Yeah, I, I, I think so, you, you come into the hearing, complete your case.
I just like opening up.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't like to just sit there and leave, I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
I'm opening up now, because, I mean, you guys wanna hear my things, I'm gonna open up for everything.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you.
Jeff, he said we appreciate you actually coming. A lot of people he asked.
Well, don't even come to the.
To help him.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And I.
I mean, if you guys want me to come all the time, I'll come.
No.
You know, just to hear.
Made it open to the public every month, we never usually get this many people.
But if you think December first is comparable?
That'd be fine.
With that date?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you guys will give me time, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that he will, because I have nobody.
Uh huh, sure.
And I just can't pick that thing up on my hands. I mean, that thing weighs about a thousand pounds, you know, so.
Yeah, we'll do December first then.
I'm not Superman, I can't just, I just, I can't.
We'll take another look at it then.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
You know, I have a bad heart and stuff, you guys gotta give me time, I'm not supposed to be doing anything, but I am.
You got it.
Well, I'll make a motion, um, to give it till December first, if at that time they're still, he, that he'll come back and does it with us, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Second? Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three zero six North Six, Zeb? I'm at Sinyon, while I heard you've been having some health issues also unfortunately.
Yeah, we had an accident, but, uh, anyway, uh, Zeb's bowling, uh, the property there that we have, uh, on Sixth Street, um, we've, uh, proceeded to try to get the shingles, uh, taken care of on the, on the roof. Um, I am aware that the house needs to be taken down, um, right now financially, I'm, I'm not able to do that. Um, what do we have for options, I mean, I know that it needs to be taken down, what do we have for options to, to get that taken care of?
If I'm not mistaken, it'd be like to s- sign the deed over to the city, would that be one?
I don't think that's an option.
Or is that not an option for?
I think, I think he's trying to say, take the house down.
Oh, take the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then.
Put a lien against.
You wanna keep the lot?
I would like to keep the lot, I'd like to keep the building that's there as well. I mean, I'm trying to make effort to, to improve the building that's there.
Okay.
And, and such.
It looks like a mini storage shed, right, or similar to that?
No, no.
We're on the other property, we're on.
Sixth Street.
Sixth.
We're on Sixth Street.
Cross from Alexander's.
No, that's Fifth Street.
Yeah, that's.
Sixth Street is a high. The one with like the tree farm, yeah.
Your tree farm.
Okay.
Tree farm, yeah.
I apologize, I'm.
anyhow, we can, we can still.
Okay, so we're talking about the, where the trees are at then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we've put new windows in there in the last thirty days, um, what else have we done, we, we've.
I noticed the date looked like a pickup or trailer, something like for to hold debris or.
Right, we've, we've done, you know, we got the shingles for the property, we got the paint for the property, I mean, it's just a matter of getting it done, so.
Is your intention, Zeb, to rent that out, or?
Yes, we're gonna be renting that out just as soon as we can, um, it's not gonna be, you know, it'll probably be next year sometime, but, I mean, we're, we're trying to make an effort to get the things cleaned up and.
Four, five, two doors and windows, yeah.
Yep, it's just taking a little time, but, uh, yeah.
There's been discussions too about all those trees, do you, have you plans for all them trees?
Well, I'm selling trees right now as we speak.
Actually, we're gonna have to go because they're gonna be way too big, I mean.
Well, we're, we're selling trees, I mean, we're selling trees now, so.
Cause they're, I don't know, if they're gonna get to a point where it's just gonna be a huge forest.
Well, we're not, we won't let it go to that point, so.
So, on here it said, um, all door entrances need to be replaced or boarded up.
Yeah, we got a new door on, we got a new door on.
We've got the new windows.
Yes, ma'am.
They listed on here.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so maybe this is just something the health board can revisit in another, you know.
Watch, yeah, give it more time.
Keep it on the watch list, and then if you have anything.
Right.
Okay, are you guys good with that?
I think the biggest thing is just communication, I mean, give us a call, give us, you know.
Yeah, I've been in contact with Bob.
Can I talk to Zeb?
Yeah, I know I talked to Bob.
So.
I would like to talk sometime, not right now, during our public hearing, about the other property too, so.
Okay, we're, the other property, we got new shingles put on the property, or on the, on the building, um, the house, I know it's, it's gotta go. It's, it's just, it's inevitable, it's gotta go, it, it is what it is. Um, do we have some options, I know Bob and I, you and I talked.
Maybe in private.
Yeah, in private, now, now, this is a public hearing for that property.
Okay.
I think this lead for the three oh six North Six, we're good.
Okay.
You've, you've replaced the doors, you've replaced the windows, I think that satisfies what the health board was needing.
Progress.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming to the meeting.
Yep, not a problem.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to the Plainview FFA, uh, Keno grant request for two thousand, three hundred dollars.
I'll keep on going, like Bruce said, it's a good tool to have for the future, um, you know, like I said, I used one for four years, and it is amazing how fast you can get your results and apply it to your mapping and variable rates, saving on fertilizer, saving on watering, so teaching the younger kids this stuff now is just boosting, showing what the program can do to boost them later on.
I guess the only problem that I have is, again, it's a, a school class, it's a school.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that they don't deserve it, or, you know, it wouldn't be great for them, I'm just, that's what I'm struggling with, um.
My question would be, would they have someone from the fire department, from the city, that would be taught how to use it? I commend them for allowing that to be partnered, the city, great idea, don't mind putting money in if they're a partner, if nobody knows how to use it, or we can't get to it.
Is there a way that we can table this till next month, so Chad can be here to talk to us about it?
If he will so much.
I think that would be best, so we're just not making a split decision, either yay or nay, and can get more information on it.
Number eight, discussion action, fall cleanup day, October twenty fourth, twenty twenty, nine A M. to two P M.
I'll make a motion to approve the fall cleanup day to be October twenty fourth from ninety-two.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
We'll just run a little differently this year, yeah, we're gonna, we'll have it in the office, so you be a resident, you'll come in, somebody will be in the office, you'll collect your receipt, and you'll be able to go out to the transfer station and dump your, just so we don't have everybody from, you know, Pierce Creighton, who lives in for our residents, so.
Perfect, so would still be people waiting?
Yes.
Yeah, shapers will be.
We have how much we have to haul.
Sure, okay.
We have to have that.
But you'll have to stop in the office prior to going out and dumping and get your receipt from the office. It's hard for the guys, they don't know everyone that lives here. In the office, we kinda know a little bit better, so, you know, we had a lot of people from out of town kinda took advantage of that last time, and-
Will that be put in the paper or communicated, that way they know the steps to stop the city, get your receipt? I think that'd be good, so it's spelled out.
Go ahead, Damon.
What's being allowed for cleanup?
Whatever you can normally take to the dump. So it's just like you go to the dump, and you don't have to pay for it, you get one pickup load.
Okay.
Yep.
Can we do tires?
No, no.
Is anything acceptable at the transfer station, is that what you're asking? We just don't have any other way of this.
Is there gonna be a tire cleanup day at all?
Pierce had one, the county had one in July.
We don't have one currently set up, no.
I think it's just once a year at the county, I'm not positive, though.
Is there still plans to have somebody with a flatbed go around and pick up all those washers and dryers that are in the backyard?
That was- I'm gonna probably say no.
If they're sending the alley, can you stream up?
I actually think our health board's getting proactive enough, and they're starting to catch-
I think so, too, the health board's-
I think our yards look a lot better now.
voting, Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries, okay. Number nine, health board recommendations for nuisance properties. First one is two ten North Pine Street, right across the street.
I make a motion to send them the letter.
I'll second that.
Bob, further discussion?
No.
Tyler, second.
No, I'm good.
Okay, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries, six zero one East Woodman Avenue?
I make a motion to send them the thirty day letter as well.
That one has a trailer full of junk. A bunch of stuff on the very own, been sitting there quite a while.
You second, Bob?
Second, yes.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries in two zero six North Sixth Street?
That one has a trailer full of junk, backyard, kind of by the alley, and a bunch of other junk around.
I drove by both, or I drove by all of them on the way home tonight.
I'll make a motion for the same.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob? And number ten, added, let's see, discussion action, approval of C D B G D T R drawdown, number four, added ten nine of twenty twenty, and then you see the, behind it, it's from Lowell Schroeder.
This is just your final influence, or final invoice from Confluence, which is the firm doing your D T R grant, all your planning stuff.
For a total of eighteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
And then we get fifteen nine eighty-five of that match back through the grant, so we only are getting two nine nine five.
Right.
Once we get that match back.
I'll make a motion to approve the C D B D D T R drawdown.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries, number twelve, console comments. I'll start at my left, huh, Tyler?
None this time.
Pam? Julie?
Nothing.
Bob?
Oh, I would like to welcome the high schoolers for attending the meeting tonight for their class.
Yeah, I thought maybe you were here for F F A or bowling or something, I wasn't sure. It's for what, history or government, okay.
I just want to say, Brian, that as the health board, we're working on quite a few things. And Jeremy and I met just last week, and we came up with a new form that's gonna streamline the process, it's gonna keep everybody on the same page, gonna keep it all organized, about when we took it on, when the council passed it, when it was taken care of, the whole nine yards. And we're also working on city ordinance to ban household furniture on porches and yards.
That is great.
So, that's what I'm up to, okay, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Number thirteen, city attorney comments, and then I'll read the consideration, possible approval of engagement letter with Baylor Eppen, law firm concerning updating personnel manual and/or other employment-related matters.
I felt quirky to see about getting this on, and she mentioned she and Jeremy had already had a plan to look at the general personnel manual. You know, this is all what you have today, and we've been working with for the last ten years, was a form that Bolton came up with, and it's not up to date, and it certainly needs attention. There's a lot of generic stuff in it, that's plain view stuff that needs attention. But specifically, the employment law-related stuff, even with folks from Lincoln in assistance on the issues recently, it is out of date, I've never worked on it, but I don't operate on the basis of specialty things like this. I mean, federal employment law is not something that's efficient for me to do. You don't go to the Plainview Hospital, they have a detailed operation on your smashed hand, and I don't do that type of employment law. I mean, in theory, you could, but the education process is more expensive than hiring somebody that's a specialist. And they would work on this, they suggested to me perhaps ten, twelve hours, and submit a couple pages of update to the due process and procedural things. And then we'd have that in hand by the time the rest of the local stuff got going. So I think it'd be well to consider letting them work on that, get it ready and get it to us, so that when they have a revision of the whole book, that can be thrown in there and passed all at once. It might take them a little while, I don't know how much priority they'll give it, but it's not rocket science at all on this specialized stuff. So if you hire them, you would expect to spend probably two or three thousand dollars, the way they're putting it to me, and they would provide a full update of all that stuff, I think it'd be well done.
I'd like some time to go through it all and actually see what we need to send to them, because, I mean, we might need more sent to them than not, so we're not really, I'm not ready to say yes or no, but I mean, if you guys wanna go that route, it's fine, but I'd like some time to look through it and see where-
Do you wanna revisit it next month?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, and all we're talking about here is the specialized due process and federal employment law stuff. So, you know, I guess if you wanna wait, you can wait, but I don't see that changing based on local comments. I don't have anything that I'm gonna try and overrule what the people who do it for a living say, and I doubt if Jeremy does. But if you wanna wait, I guess we can wait.
We might, we wanna send more stuff to them, I'm saying, I'm not saying they're perfect, I'm saying they might have-
And you notice in their letter, they say, and we agree to continue to represent you concerning such things if you want us to, but you could package it all then in one effort. Well, that's fine, I got no-
Anything else, please?
No.
I just, our website should be done shortly, I'm just waiting on them now on a couple things, but I updated everything that I need to update. Once I get back into the process, the girl I had originally started working with was no longer working on the project, so I kinda started from square one with somebody else, but I have everything updated, just a matter of keeping minutes and agendas updated on it, but everything else is up to date. So once that is live, then you will have your email addresses. So I'm hoping within the next couple weeks, we have our audit on the twenty eighth, so we're getting ready for that, so that's gonna take a little bit of my time, so hopefully, they don't all mix together, but other than that, everything's good in the office, so.
We did receive four notices from the state for our budget, they're all minor, we sent them back in, they had any problems, they were just minor. But didn't change any of the budget, and so we're pretty happy the way it came back, so.
Jeremy, do you have anything for us?
I think we're good so far.
Yes.
You want public comments?
It's not on the agenda, but-
You didn't ask for a public comment, okay.
I'd just like to remind everybody before our next regular meeting, one week before, is the general election that will be held here, or absentee ballot, if you so choose to do, and please educate yourself on all the issues, and please vote. And motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for coming.